All right, we're live.
Good morning.
Good morning. We're all muted.
Everyone's muted. So we can start. Good morning. Welcome to East Brandon Friday, March 27th, 10:30 a.m. We are doing this virtual meeting in place of our regular meeting scheduled for last Thursday due to the emergency situation in Chester County and throughout the United States. Do you guys want to start? How about here? I don't even have my agenda printed or anything. How do you pull up your agenda on the side?
All right, so there is a public version of the agenda that shows up on the screen that you're looking at. That does not the full meeting packet. Anyone can download the full meeting packet off of the township's website. There's a calendar entry with a link to the PDF. But that's going to be in a separate window for. So E-Brand Wine O R G.
I have the agenda in front of me if you want me to take the lead while he's getting that.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Good evening. East Brandon Township Board of Supervisors Regular Session Meeting for Friday, March 27th, 2020. Today's agenda, reminder, a recording device will be used during this meeting. We're going to open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and justice for all. Public comment for non-agenda items. Just wanted to remind everybody, rules for conduct in public meetings by Resolution 2008. The time allotted to each individual may be determined shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted in traction of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Today's minute meeting report, February 20, Board of Supervisors Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 20?
I'll make a motion to approve the February 20 Board of Supervisors Meeting Minutes.
All in favor? Aye. Treasurers' Report. We had a copy of this ahead of time, so I'll make a motion that we approve the Treasurer's Report that we've looked over before this having to go through this all in virtual.
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report as provided to us.
All in favor? Aye. Building Inspectors' Report.
I'll make a motion to approve the Building Inspection Report as presented.
All in favor? Aye. Matt, the Roadmasters' Report.
The microphone was muted. My Roadmasters' Report will be part of the, a little bit later in the agenda.
Okay. Chief, the East Brandon Wine Police Department Report for February 20.
Kyle, I believe also my report is part of that packet. I don't know if you want me, I can't see the agenda, but we have a cooperative mutual, police mutual aid agreement we need to discuss. You want to do that now or later?
No, I think we can do that later. I just, if there was anything new besides what was printed ahead of time for us, besides that. Okay. All right. And then the Fire Department Report. Does anybody, Scott, are you handling that?
I was not. My thought on those reports were that they could all be approved because they have been presented previously.
Understood. So do I have a motion to approve the Roadmasters' Report as submitted? The East Brandon Wine Police Department Report as submitted, as well as the Fire Company Report as submitted?
No.
Yes.
It says to go, that's right.
Yes, I will make a to approve the Roadmasters' Report as submitted. The Police Department's Report, February as submitted, and the Fire Company's Report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, new business.
Kyle, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Kristen. Just make sure Jason's making the motion. I know it's difficult with only two board members. Just make sure you're seconding them and then call the vote.
Okay. Okay, so now on the table, we have the presentation for resignation of Chairman Ador. I personally don't have anything to offer on this right now. I'll leave this up to Jason if he has anything to say pertaining to this.
Well, we received his letter of resignation back on the 12th of March. Due to the time constraint for this new position that he had pursued between the primary and the actual November election. So Kyle, are we accepting his resignation?
I will not be accepting his resignation. I actually had a conversation with Mr. Ador yesterday. He had already told me that he had spoken with you and there's an interest of possibly rescinding that resignation. So I think the board at this point should advertise a public meeting to occur between the supervisors and the and Mr. Ador in further discussing this at a disclosed time that will be advertised by the solicitor.
Okay.
All right, so we'll table that one then. Now, I guess we'll point over to the appointment of Gail Matthews to the Parks and Recreation Board, and I'll turn that over to Luke.
Morning, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. We are joined today in the digital audience by Resident Gail Matthews. And I'm pleased to announce that the East Brandon Wine Township Parks and Recreation Board is recommending her appointment to fill a vacancy on Parks and Rec Board. So at this time, I respectfully ask the board consider appointing her to Parks and Recreation.
All right, so I'll, hey, Jason, I'll take the, make the motions. If you want to take the lead on this, I'll just make the motions for you.
Okay.
All right, so I make a motion to appoint Gail Matthews to the Parks and Recreation Board.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
COVID-19 virus policies regarding public meetings and use of township building. I'll turn this over to Scott.
This was a motion that I received from East Vincent Township through Tom. And I thought it would be a good idea to have this as part of the meeting today simply to ratify what we've always or already have done as far as closing the the township building, public spaces to all members of the public except in limited situations and particularly the meeting rooms that we have until we get a handle on this virus. And the board has already seen that motion, and I just asked for the board's consideration of adopting those items in the motion.
All right. I think Jason's still here, but I'll make that a motion to approve the COVID-19 virus policies. And Jason, if you can hear me, if you have anything to say about that.
No, I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief, I'm going to turn it over to you and Kristen for the mutual aid agreement for Chester County Municipal Police Department.
Good morning, everyone. I hope all you guys are doing well. Earlier, or towards the end of last week, a mutual aid agreement between all the police agencies in Chester County was floated by the District Attorney's Office. And it was in response to the COVID-19, but also they wanted to assure that we were all there to help each other out. And there was some feedback that we got from a lot of the chiefs and many of the solicitors that it may not be necessary to do the entire county. So they urged each township to look at creating a mutual aid agreement between agencies around your local area. I have spoken to Chief Holland and have spoken to Chief Elias from the county. And the three of us agreed that it was in all of our best interest to create this mutual aid agreement between the three jurisdictions. East County is included in this because Downingtown has a service agreement with them. They provide police service to them. And Kristen worked along with the other solicitors to get this agreement nailed down. I just got an email a couple of minutes ago from Chief Holland that they executed the agreement this morning. And it's already signed and I got the copy back, Kristen.
Yeah.
So this really is just prepping in case, God forbid, we'd have an issue with any of the officers or half the department would go down. We would be able to pull from other agencies manpower to keep us covered 24/7, vice versa.
Andy Ralph represents the county, and he said his board will be signing it and then ratifying at a future meeting in April. So they're on board. And County Township, obviously, I represent that township as well. Joe Elias is the chief there. And I believe, Chief, you spoke with him, they're on board as well. They, same thing, the chief will be given authority to sign it, and then the Board of Commissioners will ratify it. They're tentatively scheduled to have a meeting the first week of April. And just one thing, at the intergovernmental cooperation law, which allows intergovernmental cooperation on various services, including police, it does require that when intergovernmental agreements are done, it should be approved through a resolution. Max O'Keefe, who represents the borough of Downingtown, had a resolution drafted. He sent it to me literally like a half an hour before the meeting. We revised it and made it so that the board, this board could sign it. So if you are going to authorize entering this agreement, if we could give it a resolution number and I'll I had emailed the resolution to everybody probably at 10:15. We can follow up and have that be signed.
Okay, I would make a motion that we we do, just as Kristen just stated, with regards to the mutual aid agreement for the COVID-19.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to our Roadmaster for the LED lighting proposal for the Township Municipal Complex.
Morning. Matthew Van Lou, Roadmaster, East Brandon Wine. We've received a quote from Stouts Lighting for converting the interior lights in the administration building and the maintenance garage to LED. This includes all four foot fluorescent, two by two fluorescent, and recessed lights. Also included are eight foot located in the police garage and also in the maintenance building garage. This proposal is for the lighting fixtures only and does not include the installation. Stouts Lighting is a CoStar approved vendor. The road department personnel will be installing all the lighting and changing some of the configuration in the meeting room from where controlled. An example, the lights near the front would be able to turn off better viewing of the overhead screen. There may be a need for new dimmer switches, about four of those for the lights. The other cost not included in the proposal is a rental of a scissor lift for the meeting hall and for the garage installations. Total cost of the proposal is $42,078.75. And we anticipate a rebate from PICO of $4,787, bringing the total project cost, including incidentals, to $37,291. We have $37,000 budget in the Public Works Capital Fund, underlying item 40972. I respectfully request permission to proceed with the purchase of LED lighting from Stouts Lighting as presented.
And Matt, I just wanted to clarify, this is something that your Public Works team would be working on as well.
Correct. They would be installing all the lights throughout the buildings.
All right, do I have a motion to appoint the LED lighting proposal for the Township Municipal Complex?
I'll make a motion to approve Matt's proposal for the LED lighting for the municipal complex.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Matt, you might as well continue for your permission to advertise for the bid specifications for Hawthorne Drive.
Okay, and I believe Beth Yor from Cedarville Engineering is also on the attendees list. And if there's any questions that I may not be able to answer, hopefully she can, she can come out with that. So we have completed the bid documents for Culberson Run Stormwater Improvement Project. This is a project that's been going on probably since 2014, 2015. So it's been, it's been a long time we've been working on this. This project includes removal of tree stumps located along the road edge, recreating swales, installation of additional stormwater infrastructure, and installation of three subsurface basins for stormwater retaining. We have removed paving from the overall bid document and added as an alternate. This gives us the opportunity to pay for the paving out of the liquid fuel. It's anticipated that the total project cost is $8672 and will take approximately four months. Due to the three subsurface basins on the project, they will be done in stages to maintain access for all residents to their individual quarters. The project will be from three sources. First is an existing 2018 Growing Greener Grant, First capital fund, which is $312,115. And from the liquid fuels fund, $246,532. I respectfully request permission to advertise the Culberson Run Stormwater Improvements Project.
And is any, Beth, I'm not sure if you're able to speak now, but if there's anything that Beth wanted to add, if she is?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I don't have anything specific to add. I think Matthew's pretty much covered it. Unless anybody has any additional questions, I'm available to answer them to the best of my ability.
Kyle, I have a few questions. Beth, and Matthew, maybe I'm confused. Are you going to pull the paving work out of this particular contract? So who's ever bidding on the culvert repairs is not going to be the entity doing the paving? Or is it just the funding source is different?
Sorry. No, it will be included in the paving. I mean, in the contract, it will just be an alternate. And it'll help us better track the cost of the paving. And I believe it'll, it will help with with using liquid fuels because there are a lot of restrictions on the use of liquid fuels.
Okay, because I had a chance to review the documents and I was saying to Luke before the meeting started, I think they were very well done. Beth, you guys did a great job. I do have just maybe 10 or 15 different points that I'd like to go over with you. One of which is that, that right now it's set as the paving work is part of the actual contract. It's not set as an alternate. So we'd have to switch that. A couple of other questions. Do we have all of the property interests or the property rights that are needed for the bidder to complete this work?
We do. We have, we requested from a lot of the property owners the right to entry. And some of them did not grant right to entry. So the plan in two locations, we're going to have to build a short knee wall. And then you all, it's going to be probably six to 12 inches tall. Because we're not able to go onto a person's property to do grading or the swell. So there's going to be a small knee wall. You all will be within the township right away and will not disturb that person's property at all.
And do those, do those construction easements or rights to enter, do they have any timeframe? Are they indefinite until the work is completed? Or is there some sort of set term for the agreement?
There is not a timeframe on the rates to entry themselves.
Okay. Another question is the bid docs refer to the contractor being responsible to obtain all necessary permits. So what types of permits would be needed? Is there, I'm thinking a road opening permit, but are there any DEP permits or any other permits that are required?
No, there should not be.
Answer that a little bit better.
Yeah, there should not be any DEP or confirmation of the permits. Those, even with less than an acre worth of disturbance, no impacts to to regulated streams or wetlands or anything like that. So as far as county and state, there should not be any permits.
Okay, and then my last comment is, and this is obviously a board consideration, is, you know, obviously there's been a lot of with Scott's taking the lead on being upset by the fact that the governor has granted waivers for certain work to occur. In terms of the timing, the way this bid is structured right now, if you advertise, the bids would come in, I think the preliminary schedule would have to be adjusted. But basically it gives the board 60 days to award the bid, and then it gives 120 days for the contractor to get to substantial completion. Do we think with the COVID emergency right now that that's, that that's really what we want to be doing? I mean, I don't, I'm raising as a question, obviously, nobody knows the end date of this disaster declaration, but I just wonder if there's something that we need to build in the flexibility. I don't know if you want, I wouldn't, I would not think that this work is considered life sustaining or emergency services or critical infrastructure. But maybe you guys could tell me otherwise, and I just, I throw it out there as a comment.
Yes, Beth and I spoke yesterday about this, and we believe that we should, and with your assistance, come up with a addendum on the, due to the situation that we are in right now. That would extend the project through.
Okay. It may be too early to tell, but I'm curious, Beth, if you have a thought on whether bidders will just not even bid on the project because of the uncertainty of whether they can perform the work? And if there's any uncertainty in whether they can get the materials? I should put money on it and advertise it and then find out that you're either getting high bids because they're they're being cautious and conservative, or you don't get any bids.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I think that right now the feeling is, is that it might be opposite. You know, it might be that since contractors have time on their hands right now, and a lot of them aren't out on construction sites, that they're looking for opportunities to build a backlog. Then it might be an ideal time to, you know, to bid the job. You know, you never know until you do it. I have, I have another one in process right now that is going to be, I guess, the bid, the bid ending date is, the opening date is coming up at the end of April, so it's a little bit ahead of this. We can't really say, I don't have a, I don't have a definitive feel for that, but it seems like the longer, the longer that's waiting, you know, the longer that we wait, the chances that the pricing would go up. Because if construction does let loose, then everybody will be very busy.
Okay.
Kristen, I think that based on the license from the governor's office in D C D, if anything, we could get a waiver, a commission waiver to get this project specifically approved. I think an argument could be made that this is creating a public issue with the, with stormwater management. And based on PSAT, this is home or town hall meeting, I believe that the municipality actually can regulate something like this. So one way or another, I believe we could get it done.
Well, and I don't disagree with you. I just wonder though, are you taking, are you putting the township in inconsistent positions where we're again, you know, strongly advocating against the waivers with respect to construction, but yet on our, you know, the second breath, putting out a bid and asking and inviting contractors to come into your township and it's just, I mean, that's absolutely a policy decision for the board to make, but I just throw it out there as it could be somewhat hypocritical and inconsistent.
Could I ask a question regarding the timing of the bid and going to construction? Is there a way to modify the language that it could be bid now? And then construction could be dependent upon the status of the COVID-19 restrictions?
Yeah, you can word it however you want, but I just think contractors, that's going to have an impact upon the price they bid because they, you know, certainty to them, they obviously have a schedule lined up, which everybody's schedule is thrown to hell in a handbasket right now, but I mean, maybe it's something you just, you put it out and you see, and then you, you know, you build some language in in terms of the contract for being able to extend timeframe based on the disaster, and you work with the successful bidder on that.
Yeah, I think it would hurt to put it out to bid now and instead of, you know, and see what, what type of results we do get.
I would agree with that, to be honest with you, but I guess we can do a board vote on that as well. Jason, anything?
I think it should be cleaned up before going out. I think I'm a little concerned about the estimate. I mean, wasn't the original estimate like 450 and now it's 800? That's kind of a little bit of a surprise. But I think, I think it should be cleaned up rather than just seeing who replies. I think it should be presented as we see fit at the right time.
Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, this is not an option. We do have to do this as part of, as part of the law. We agreed to do it. Am I wrong on that?
I'm sorry. It was broke up a little bit.
I was just saying, correct me if I'm wrong, but is this something that we have to do? We did commit to doing it. Now granted, to what aspect or how long, how much money? We did agree to do this, correct?
Well, like I said at the beginning, it's been a long ongoing project since around 2015. And we have, we've committed to the Growing Greener Grant for the $246,000. If we were to, and that's, that's part of our pollution reduction plan also.
Right.
requirement. So if we were to, I'm going to say not do this project. It's, it could cause I'll say a lot of problems further down the road. We would have to revamp our pollution reduction plan. It would cost quite a bit of money. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot.
All right. My other thought is, is there a chance that this grant be revoked? If, being in the conditions that we're in right now, is that something that we need to worry about as well?
I'll let Beth speak to that if you don't mind.
Sure.
As far as the Growing Greener Grant is concerned, the period of performance, which Um, as far as the growing greener grant is concerned, the period of performance, which the work needs to be completed during is is stated as December eleventh through twenty eight or December eleventh, twenty eighteen through December thirty first, twenty twenty one. So that gives till next the end of next year to to complete this project. So the um, I guess the concern with waiting is that pricing only tends to increase. I know we're in we are in an un have an uncertain time right now, so it's hard to predict what pricing will be currently. But typically, the longer the longer that 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 you wait, the the chances of the pricing going up is, you know, is what what's gonna happen. So, you know, the the project has to be constructed by December thirty first, twenty twenty one. Extensions can be entertained by DEP. However, you know, it just, the longer it takes to to perform the work, the less favorable new growing greener grant opportunities are to, you know, if 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 the township were to pursue additional funding for for other projects to meet your pollutant pollutant reduction plan goals in the future.
All right. And just a reminder, this is just a permission to advertise, and then the next part of this is out of pocket expenses for advertising. I mean, we're talking hundreds, maybe a thousand dollars as opposed to, is there anything else I'm missing?
Um, I I am not sure what the advertising cost is. I don't know. Scott or Luke has a better idea.
Couple hundred dollars.
All right. I mean, I have no problem with with the with the, I mean, again, we're not committing to anything on this. Obviously, I need Jason's support in order for this to occur, but I mean, I I'll make the motion, and then if Jason doesn't want it, I understand that as well, but I'll make the motion unless, do we have any? This is another, I guess I should have asked. Is there any way to see if any of the attendees has any comments on this before we make this motion?
Been soliciting the the attendees by chat throughout the meeting here, and I I know of no one who has indicated they would like to comment. I I do have people online for your next agenda item who I'll add as presenters.
Okay. Jason, did you say something?
Was that who was on the screen, Michael?
One of the attorneys, yes.
Okay, now, I guess my the the grant that we received, the two hundred and forty-six thousand, Beth, is that just for this project, for the Hawthorne project?
Yes, that's correct. That's for the construct. That's towards the construction costs for the Hawthorne Drive stormwater improvements.
And your total estimate of roughly eight eight hundred and four thousand, is that including that grant, or is that is that is that construction cost subtracted from that, or is that not even going to play yet?
That should that includes the they, I guess, the total cost that you're and I don't I don't have that uh what you're looking at in front of me, but that should include the grant costs. It also should include the, I believe it includes the estimate for paving that's not associated with that that will come from liquid fuels, and Matthew can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Yeah, yes, that the total project cost is the eight hundred and four thousand. And then I broke down the uh how we would fund the project. If you have a copy of my report or?
Yeah.
Okay. So then broken down into the the three different sources of to pay for the project. Growing greener.
And the paving cost is to restore the entire or it's is to pave the entire length of Hawthorne Drive, not just in the area of the proposed improvements.
Correct.
So we can kind of technically, we can kind of back out the two the the two forty-six.
Um, a portion of it. Part of it that is included in that two forty-six is the over top of the three basins that are proposed. So the basins will be located within the roadway roadway right of way underneath the existing road. So that base repair is included in that two forty-six. So some of those some of those costs would go back into the the bid itself.
Excuse me, I'm trying to find I'm trying to find the breakdown, but so is the project a million dollars?
No, the total cost of the project is.
I mean, I guess, where's it? Where's the grant? Where's the grant for a line item?
Where is the grant?
Yeah, for the line item cost or credit. Is that, I'm just trying to figure out where the grant, I'm trying to figure out if if it's eight hundred and four thousand, you know, what an actual contractor is gonna, what you think a contractor is gonna be the bidding? And we have two forty-six, and we're gonna all of a sudden do a contract modification? Or if it's, you know, how's that gonna, I guess. Kristin, maybe. It might be not.
The the eight hundred and four thousand dollars is the total cost of the project, which includes everything. The paving, installation of stormwater, removals, upgrading along the edges of the roadway. So when the contractors finished with that project, you essentially have all new stormwater, new grading, and all new asphalt. So you you leave and the roadway is completely done. The reason why we broke the asphalt out of it is to now us to pay for liquid fuels out of that, even though it's still in the contract, it's considered an alternate, so that we get a individual price on that. And this is this is all an estimated price. So out of that eight hundred and four thousand dollars, if you take out the essentially hundred and forty-six thousand from growing greener, then you're left the uh the other is coming out of the Public Works Capital Fund, three hundred and twelve thousand, and liquid fuels, two forty-six. Three funding sources.
So 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 essentially, the the grant is going to be set aside. We pay a contract or whatever the bid come in, the the lowest and best option, and then we just get replenished from grant later.
Correct. Yeah, that's correct.
So Jason, look at it as for the total cost of the project of approximately eight hundred and four thousand. That's the estimate. The township will be footing the bill for three hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. That's coming out of your capital repair projects. And I don't know what you budgeted for the year. I know that Ken before had raised when this issue was being talked about. He had asked for, you know, sort of a global look at what other capital repair projects would be slated for this year? And how does this number fit in with what your overall budget is? As far as the grant, and Beth can correct me, I believe the township pays for the work and then submits invoices to be reimbursed from the grant funds. So we will put money out for the two sixty-four, but you'll get that back through the grant. As far as liquid fuels, that money comes in from the state. It's in a separate account, and will you be utilizing it for the paving of the roads?
No, I understand. It makes sense now.
I have a question for Beth. So and again, I know this somewhat, but not a hundred percent. I'm assuming that DEP approved your the township's MS four permit, and as part of that MS four permit, you have a PRP pollutant reduction plan. And as part of the approval of that, the township committed to doing this work. Is that a true statement?
That, well, that is a true statement. I mean, that is a true statement.
Okay, the reason I bring that up is that, and I think we were, Matthew was trying to to bring this forward. We're you're 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 not contractually obligated, but permit obligated to the DEP to perform this work. And there would be violations of the permit. I don't I've not seen the DEP issue citations or or notices of violation yet. It's not that they wouldn't or couldn't, but the point is that if you don't do this project, which you're obligated to do under your permit, you would have to have some other substitute project, and you'd have to plan for that. And that goes to the point that Matthew was saying, that a lot of energy and time was spent by Cedarville Engineering to prepare the permit and to prepare the pollutant reduction plan. And if you're not going to do this project, you're going to have to come up with a substitute project, which would require your back to the drawing board and figuring out what that is. You're still going to end up spending money, whether you like it or not. So just to throw it out there as information.
And I'd also like to real quick just remind everybody, now, as Beth and maybe Matt alluded to, possibly could be a good time when contractors are down and out and don't have a whole lot of income coming in. But just remember, when things pick up, and they will, when things pick up, the the uh that that area of work is going to get inundated with with backlog, and therefore, people might take advantage of that later on with their prices as well.
No, I I understand. I I would just I was just wanted the little bit clarification on the grant. That's all. It makes sense to me now, so. If you want, I'll second your motion, Kyle, to approve the advertising of the bid specifications for the Hall for Hawthorne Culverston Run project MS four permit that was approved by the DEP and Cedarville.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to move on to subdivision and zoning applications, and we're going to start out with Capriati Oldham Lot Line Change Preliminary and Final Plan Approval. I'll turn this over to Scott for that.
Thank you. The Planning Commission reviewed this plan earlier in March. Plan basically is to take a small area of land from number five Darian Court in the Heatherwind West Development and merge that with the existing property at two fifty Corner Catch Road. Essentially, this is a lot line change to allow for the construction of a new septic disposal field for two fifty Corner Catch Road. As I said, the Planning Commission approved this. They approved the preliminary plan, and they approved the final plan in two separate motions. March fourth, I believe, was the Planning Commission date, and you could have an excerpt in your packet from the Planning Commission meeting minute of that date. And I know Michael Ryan's on the phone or on the yeah, on the webinar. So if there's any further legal questions, he can certainly answer those. The simplicity is that there's land from five Darian Court to fifty Corner Catch Road to facilitate the new septic disposal system to be constructed, and the the buyers for two fifty Point Catch Road are anxious to have that done so they can settle on the property transfer from the estate of Capriati.
Scott, did the Planning Commission have any issues? There were four waivers that were requested by the applicant. Did the Planning Commission make a recommendation that those waivers be granted?
They they did. I I don't remember what was waiver, and I don't have the document in front of me. One of the items that the Planning Commission suggested, which was actually a suggestion from the Chester County Planning Commission, was to show the isolation difference from the septic system on five or Darian Court to system on two fifty Corner Catch Road.
Okay, the waivers are pretty minor. The first one is just the plan sheet size. They want to allow the sheet size to be twenty-four by thirty-six. The second one, they do not want to have to do a conservation plan due to the fact that the scope of this plan is so minimal. The third one, they'd like the board to approve the preliminary and the final in one application. Is that they request that the electronic files of the plans be submitted after the board approves it. So there's four very minor waivers.
Yes.
Are you saying the Planning Commission supported the lot line change plan with the waivers? And the condition that the plans be revised to show the isolation distance from the septic system?
That's correct, and you can see the inflation differences, the circle, it's shown on these revised.
It seems like they're ready to be approved. The board has any issues, doesn't have any issues.
I I was just gonna say, if anybody that's pertaining to this on the attendees list has anything they wanted to say, I guess now would be.
Yes, hello.
Go ahead, we lost him.
Yeah. Connection issue.
I think we're, yeah, I think we're having a buffering issue with Mr. Ryan. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can now. There was some buffering problem there. Real quickly, the Planning Commission did approve this with the four minor waivers and the and the small change to the plan which has been made. And I point out, of course, that there are no additional residences, no additional lots being proposed here.
Okay, any anybody else?
I think everything's been covered, so whether you want to make a motion to grant preliminary and final in one motion, or as the Planning Commission did, they did those motions separately. That's up to the board.
I don't have a problem with it.
I'll make a motion to approve the Capriati Oldman Lot Line Change Preliminary and Final Plan Approval.
Jason, does your way, does your motion include the waivers noted on the correspondence from the applicant?
Yes, as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, gonna go on to Scott. You might as well stay on. We'll go to the Mapleview Development Street Name Revisions.
Okay, the Chester County Department of Emergency Services contacted me about two street names in the Mapleview Development, one being Warren Lane, the other being Silver Maple Lane, having conflicts with other street names in Chester County. I've never encountered this before. In in past practices, I've always checked to determine if there were similar street names in adjacent municipalities. I will admit that I missed that there's a Warren Avenue in Callen Township. And then Silver Fox Lane in the Ridgewood West Development, because the post office sorts their mail on the first name. They don't like like that to be have similar names. And also, the nine-one-one center. Their information when you call nine-one-one, that call flashes to Verizon's comm center in Philadelphia, and then flashes back to, in this case, the Government Services Center at six oh one West Town Road or the alternate comm center in the Public Safety Training Center in South Coatesville at one thirty-seven Modena Road. So it picks up that information, and they're saying that's a conflict for those two. So the developer came up with the two new names that I presented. We had those checked by the Department of Emerg- Uh, we had those checked by the Department of Emergency Services and approved. Um, and we simply need the board's approval, and we'll get, uh, we have the plans for the board to sign, and Don Sample from Land Development Services will, um, record those modified plans, uh, with the Recorder of Deeds Office.
Okay, thank you. Jason, any questions on that?
Um, is it Paper Bark or Paperback Square?
Paper Bark. If you'll notice, all, all of the street names have some reference to trees.
I didn't know one of those existed. Uh, okay. I'm okay with it, Kyle.
Okay, so, uh, do we have a motion to, uh, approve the Development Street Name?
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, name revisions for the Mapleview Development, currently under construction, to Paper Bark Street and Glory Maple Street.
I will second. All in favor? Aye.
Scott, I have a question on that. Are they really going to make you re-record a whole nother plan set for that?
No, just that page.
Okay, but they really need, okay, all right.
That's, I checked that with, I checked that with both the Management Office and the Recorder of Deeds Office. And I have an email from the Recorder of Deeds Office that says that they'll record that specific page. And I guess what they do is put that into the recorded plan for the development.
Yeah, the only thing is, you make sure whoever goes to record that brings those emails, because they're, when you get to the recorder, they're going to say, well, why hasn't the County Planning Commission signed off and gone through an Act 247 review? So it, you may, it may take some, you know, some shepherding through the recorder's office, which recorder's office obviously isn't open right now, but if and when you get into that issue and, and a problem, I can try to assist.
Okay, thank you, Kristin.
All right, uh, Jason, I didn't hear your, your a or nay on that?
What? I'm sorry.
Last motion, I, I just couldn't hear you. I wanted to clarify, you were okay with it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm, yay.
Good. All right, uh, ordinance and resolutions for consideration. Um, I'm going to turn that over to Scott again, or just stay there, Scott, I guess, for the resolution 06 of 2020, Declaration of Local and Level Emergency Disaster Declaration.
Okay, before we get into that, I just wanted to let the board know that I do have the Capriati Oldham, uh, plans for your signature, uh, in my possession, as well as the, um, the Mapleview Street Name Plan. So, uh, I'll get the board members to sign those, so that once, once the Recorder of Deeds Office is accepting those, uh, they can move that forward. Um, but anyway, uh, Resolution 6 of 2020, uh, I submitted, uh, as part of the disaster declaration process, this resolution, which basically states that, uh, the President declared an emergency disaster declaration, as did the County of Chester. Uh, we, uh, followed suit, um, through my position as Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator, uh, on Wednesday, the 18th of March. And the only, uh, the only thing that, uh, I need the board to do is to ratify that, and in, uh, adopting this resolution, that ratifies our emergency declaration. Uh, I'm sure that you've seen in emails that I sent, including one last night, that there are, uh, there may be opportunities for us, uh, to recover the costs of our response to the COVID-19, uh, emergency, including things such as what the police department did as far as having their, uh, cars disinfected, the locker rooms. If we choose to do something like that, uh, we can hopefully recover those costs. I think from a local level, uh, while it gives us the opportunity, right now, we don't have a great deal of costs. Uh, that also includes the fire department. I'm sure that they've gotten supplies that they've needed to respond to certain emergencies. They would be included, and I did send that information to Chief D'Amico last night. Um, the county is trying to, um, catalog all that information. Uh, they're supposed to be getting that every Monday, I believe, uh, from the emergency management coordinators. So Chief, the, when we get the invoice from the, um, cleaning firm that, that you, uh, chose, I would provide that to Mark Ferrari in an email and ask him to forward that to the county as part of that process. But basically, this resolution, uh, confirms the, um, the emergency declaration that I submitted on behalf of the township on March the 18th. It is also longer than seven days. I believe it's to April 30th, which is permitted by Title 35 of the Pennsylvania Consolidated Statutes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so is that the correct resolution? I saw something earlier about 07. Um, this is the correct one, 06?
It is, as far as I know, yes.
Okay. So I guess, uh, do we have a motion to approve early 06 of 2020 for the Declaration of Local and Level Disaster Declaration?
I'll make a motion to approve Revolution 6, 2020, for the Emergency Declaration of the Coronavirus COVID-19 Pandemic.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, public comment on the agenda items? Luke, do we have that?
Uh, I've, I've solicited a number of times, and no one has indicated they're interested in making comment at this time.
Understood.
We were joined by a total of 11 people for this meeting, two of whom were promoted to become speakers at various points. And I'll point out that two people joined us by phone, and those two people who joined us by phone are unable to flag my attention that they may want to address the board. And that was included in our advertisement, so that is an unfortunate drawback of those joining us by phone.
Okay, and, and to the public, please bear with us during this difficult time with the, with the, uh, um, converting web meetings, uh, and please check the township website for updates pertaining to COVID-19 in regards to our township and policies presented. Uh, there's no notices here, I just wanted to let everybody know that as stated in the beginning of the meeting, um, that supervisor winners and I will try to sit down and we'll advertise with Ken Hader in the near future. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luke and Scott, and everyone who helped set this up.